He's probably in his office.
His office he is.
It's not going now.
We got, we got.
I know you said it.
We got.
I'm here.
That's cool. We'll just call this. All right, uh, so we're gonna go ahead and begin the meeting of the Shane County IDA Board of Directors for December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we'll roll call ourselves this.
Zino, I'm here.
Ryan, I am here.
Corey, I am here.
Lachlan, I am here.
Bert, I am here. Uh, the IDA mission statement. It is a mission of the Shane County IDA to advance the health, prosperity, and welfare of the county's citizens by helping to retain, create, and attract business through appropriate investments and incentives. Uh, we have a forum, so I need approval of the minutes of September twentieth, October eighteenth, and November sixteenth. Can I get a motion? Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion, omissions, or corrections? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Zino, I.
Ryan, I.
Corey, same.
Lachlan, I.
Bert, I. Just enough. In the interest of our guest time today, uh, we're gonna go ahead and jump ahead in the agenda. Uh, what we'll do is really will allow, um, Principal Holdings LLC to go ahead and present today uh, in regards to the hotel project as they are applying for a pilot, uh, uh, for, for the project. So gentlemen, the floor is yours. Is everybody familiar with these gentlemen?
Unfamiliar faces, bros.
Okay, um, if you guys want to just introduce yourselves.
Dan O'Reilly, this is my brother Mike O'Reilly. We're partners, Principal Holding LLC. These are agendas. So we just did a quick little one page so we can kind of talk through. We've gone through this a bunch of times, but I would say I miss things if I don't something.
They've completed their final application?
Yeah.
RC is out, he had it for China.
All right, we're going to go back to the agenda.
That's okay.
And, uh, we can quickly go over the financial report if you'd like, Captain Joe.
Okay, uh, nothing new except, uh, the money from the money market went to the InterFi accounts, which I did attach the statement for that. And then for the twenty, or the ten days that it was in there, it made thirteen hundred in interest.
About the ten days.
And then it does list the banks that it's in. It's the very last page. So that's really the only change with the financials.
Any questions on the financials? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the financial statement.
So move.
Second?
Corey, second.
Uh, any discussions, corrections, omissions?
Excellent job on investing our funds.
Yeah. Appreciates the, the board listening to that and taking into consideration. Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and vote.
Zino, I.
Ryan, I.
Corey, I.
Lachlan, I.
Bert, I. Do you want to get into the budget?
It's not in your packets. I do have it on the screen if we need to review it, but it was sent out a couple of weeks ago.
Did it, did it change from what we saw?
Not from last time, no.
Last time?
So we had the last iteration.
Do you want me to pull it up?
Yeah, can you?
Yeah, of course.
There is no, uh, projects included in this either. So.
Right, so in case it's if we went ahead with a pilot for the hotel, there would be. Favorite solar, all favorite solar.
Correct.
It's not included.
Right.
Smurda's not included in this either?
No, because we haven't, we're at a hold right now.
Unless we have a reasonable expectation to collect those monies, we shouldn't.
We shouldn't put it in like here.
Right.
That's how we're looking at the power practices.
Makes sense.
We don't have a reasonable expectation, so we can't.
And if favorite solar closes, that could be a huge four hundred K boost to our.
And I'll say, and I'll save some time for the group just so, cause it's related to that conversation. So that money, then what do you want to do with that, right? One of the things we've talked about is trying to figure out how we can invest and continue to see the IDA be successful for other projects, right? One of the things that Shane and Jenna and I had realized in working regionally with, uh, agency in Binghamton and the Southern Tier Eight is that they, a lot of IDAs have a bank of, um, properties behind them. We're going to try to build that. Like Jenna's gonna work with Shane's group to build a bank of properties that have sewer, water, electricity, and rope, right? And say, okay, are they public property? Are they private property? Are they for sale? Not for sale. And should the IDA own them so that they're developable and ready? Because what's happening with this clean tech and micro, we're getting requests for developable sites that are ready to go right now. And lots of IDAs own that. They have banks of property that they can go to developers with. So we're gonna explore that possibility, see what kind of properties out there and discuss with the IDA whether that'd be something we want to invest when these big pilots go through.
Binghamton University was looking for publicly owned sites that had all that for development. We didn't, we don't have any.
Hundred acres of developable land, hundred to two hundred acres, right Shane? Ready to go, wow, shovel ready. You're like, yeah. And Binghamton had like nine sites on our list, so. Yeah, so we've gotta try to figure out how to build that. In, in many, in many counties, the IDA is the primary stimulus for economic development. That's where the majority of the development comes from. And that's why, and I made people crazy when I said this the first time around. And, and, and the agency, the IDA and their local government corporations, state boards, different bylaws, different rules, different sense of operating. But the economic stimulus and development all resides in one place, so. You know, and you're just, because they're all related.
So are you saying at this time, we don't have an inventory and you don't actually have ownership?
Nope.
We don't. But just to have a tally or a list of everything, we don't have that?
No.
Actually, Advanced University, they want you to have ownership, or else they won't help you develop.
Now, what, what, in this example, what are they, what's their purpose of this?
This is because of the new declaration that our region is a battery hub. So we're being selected essentially for our region to develop this battery storage industry. So we've had requests already from battery storage companies that are looking for a site that are, you know, hundred, two hundred acres that have all these things, but they want it right to be built.
So is this research development that's associated directly with the university?
Not.
Or is this a private?
No, it's, it's private.
Sector that's going to come in and create battery technology?
Yep.
Are we the only one on that list, or is it, is that?
It's basically the higher seller tier of New York State and other agents as well.
There's like, how many counties Shane apart? I can't remember. It's a big, it's a big group, Mike. It's everything from, it could be the technology associated with storing energy. It could be servicing that place, right? We, we have no idea, right? So that's one of the things that I think US Silicon is here because they anticipate building due to my crown. They want to be closer to that price. And Binghamton's directing this because that was who was designated by the federal government as the, I don't want to say, was like the organizer.
Yeah, the driving.
Regional hub is all through that. Anyways, I'm sorry, now we're here, we can, those two are related, right? As we build that inventory and do that, it'd be a question, Mike. We don't have any trace necessary for us to figure it out. Then we'll talk about who owns it and how we go after it.
Yeah, yeah, and that's good because by the end of the year, we should have close to one and a half million dollars sitting in that account. That, again, we're gonna want to make a conscious effort to reinvest. Now, we did have a bank of properties. We were essentially landlords of multiple properties for quite a while. At the time, it behooves us to liquidate, uh, due, for financial reasons. Since then, our financial position has changed dramatically. So I think we can start getting back into that industry a little bit, so.
Another one that's related, but again, nearby, they're helping us with that as well. Cottage Bakery Building is right next door. It's twice as much space as, as they need. This is, this is too, this is a continued space that's odd for us. We shouldn't be renting, commercial owners should not be renting and owning unless we're renting, or like, maybe from the IDA or leasing from the IDA to reconfigure, how to reconfigure that building. So there's investment opportunities out there, Brian, that I wanted to talk about when we got to that. But there is, as we consider these pilots and how to invest that money, it's related to the things else. I won't pick up that time, I won't.
Um, need a motion to approve the budget?
Uh, could I just have one more?
Of course you can.
Question I had on the budget. And the training and travel, we had a very conservative amount. I'm wondering if as we're training new, um, board members, is that something we should be taking a look at?
What, what was the amount for training and travel?
Two thousand. I, I'm not sure. I mean, the one that I would suggest that the board take is about five hundred bucks each, I think. It's the, there's an IDA seminar that, that, uh, they did, we took it, Jenna and I took it down in, uh, Poughkeepsie, uh, area. And it really tells you about why they were formed, what their purposes, what their role is, how to utilize the tools. It's something through the Economic Development Council. You guys know me, I didn't go to, I didn't travel much, but I took the two things this past year. I would go to that one again if I was an IDA. And so, I don't know. I think some of that travels also considered as what, part of ours, right? As part of the staff.
Yeah, I just, I was wondering because, you know, with, with Salvi and you and Jenna adopting her position.
We've got a, we got a budget of plus.
Okay.
If we went over, we'd be all right.
Okay.
We could adjust it on next year's budget.
And, and DCC also has some of that, so with me and Sal, it kind of isn't just up to the IDA.
Right.
So there, there is.
Yeah, it's for as long as both of them are, okay.
And new board members, their board training is free through the state, right? The one that's required.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can do online.
Well, the seminar actually covers that too. So you got this thing, it's a, it's a, it was a one day event. It was really, it was really well done.
Yeah.
I tend to encourage educational preparation, so.
Yeah, I'll send this board, uh, it'd be good even if people went on the board. I found it extremely interesting that, about the whole purpose of how it's supposed to work with county government. Why they're appointed by, you know, county boards and stuff like that. So it was very interesting and also helped, um, understand how to work with the Economic Development Board.
Thank you.
All right, can we get a motion?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion, questions, comments concerned? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Zino, I.
Ryan, I.
Woodford, I.
Corey, I. Lachlan, I.
Bert, I. All right, excellent. Now, we're gonna skip ahead in the agenda. Once again, I'd like to hear, uh, the O'Reilly brothers and their presentation for a pilot for the hotel across the street, uh, as presented by the Principal Holdings.
Okay, so everyone I hope knows us, but, uh, Dan O'Reilly and Mike O'Reilly. We own the engineering company here on, uh, East Main Street. And we also own, we took the Derelict Building across the street, the old school, converted that into apartments. And we also own the building on, uh, East River, yeah, converted as well. So lifelong residents of Norwich. Our grandparents immigrated into this country in the twenties and moved up here in the fifties. And we've been here ever since. Our mom's from, uh, the Utica area, but we went to college, came back, built houses here, live here now. So just to give you a little background on this project, it goes back probably to two thousand and ten, roughly, maybe longer, Brian.
That's not a long time.
It's not a long time, so decades, I guess you could say. We got involved around two thousand and sixteen, kind of chasing it. Um, the trend we in was built by basically about ten partners that pooled up their money together. Um, they sold it off into the nineties, you were involved with it. And then, uh, I don't know if you're familiar with the current owners, but it's Banta, which is a family enterprise downstate. They specialize in economy, uh, hospitality. So they took what was considered a mid-scale product in the seventies and eighties and converted it into what's considered an economy product now. Uh, when we bring people to this area, one thing that surprises everybody is the number of professional jobs we have. We bring people from Oniana, we bring people from Corcoran, from downstate, they're blown away with the number of professional jobs we have in this market. So we have, you know, Giovanni, Carrie, MDT, obviously, all these people that bring in high paying jobs, GE. We see it in our apartment building, a lot of, um, traveling people that have incomes much higher than what we usually see in this area. So the constant feedback we hear is that that product that's currently offered in Norwich does not satisfy the current need. So what I tried to do here is just kind of give you guys a brief overview of what we've come up with, the economic impact, obviously, the product status, and then the request, I guess, is what we're looking for from the IDA. So just a quick introduction to develop a premium hospitality product in the downtown area with an opportunity to draw from Corcoran and Oniana. So hotels are just, are built in, in a couple of different ways, but there's economy lodging, there's mid-scale, there's upscale, and then there's upper upscale. So Hamilton Inn is upper upscale. That's like premium product, it's not what we're going for. We're going for an upper scale product. So it's almost to the top, but we're at like the ninety percentile. Um, the only hotels, and I have all the market studies on it, that exist are in Oniana and Corcoran. So what we find is people that come to the Norwich market, go to Oniana, or they go to Corcoran, or they go to Hamilton. And Hamilton doesn't have a lot of room nights, so they typically don't go to Hamilton as much as we see anymore. Some actually go to Utica now too, some of the Binghamton feel a disagreement. So we're trying to develop a product that basically is in the dead middle of Oniana, Corcoran, Utica, and Binghamton. When you talk to the hotel brands, they all see it as this massive opportunity. So we were quite surprised when we started reaching out, we didn't think we would get much, um, feedback. We actually got way more feedback than we ever thought. And had two brands that really wanted to come into Norwich for us. So our team consists of my brother Dan, myself, and then our third partner, George, he works for us on the apartment building. He's in hospitality currently. He has Holiday Inn Express in Peekskill. It's one of the highest performing hotels in the Northeast. We rate hotels based on occupancy and average daily room rate. His occupancy is over ninety percent most times. So if you look in this area, we see sixty percent, seventy percent occupancy. It's kind of what you'd say a float, and he's seeing eighty to ninety percent. So very strong hotel product that he runs. Some history on, on the market, uh, strong professional market like I talked about. We're trying to develop a premium hospitality product, so we're actually hoping to pull on that Oniana-Corcoran market. The existing hospitality, I did kind of mention before, Banta also owns the Super Eight. So when you think about the person that owns all the hotels in this area, that's one person. He owns the Super Eight here, he owns the Red Roof Inn, he owns the Super Eight in Sydney, he owns the Super Eight in Oniana. He owns something else in Oniana. And there's another gentleman that own the other ones in Oniana. I talked about the very strong market with the upper mid-scale product. Like I said, we talked to a bunch of different hotel brands and they were really surprised at how good our market actually looks because of the MDTs, the Trolly's, those sorts of things. So our objective is, I can back up a little bit. We did look at building a new hotel. I always ask that question, so I'll answer it now. We did look at building a new hotel. We looked down at, we're all artists. The land is super expensive, right Shane? Like, super expensive. And you literally can't make the numbers work. You can't pay the bills to cover the debt service. So we, around two thousand and seventeen, started looking for building in the downtown area. We looked at the Ungunteen Building, Spence owns currently, and ended up looking at fourteen to sixteen, which is the building that Sal was talking about. So, um, Commerce Shenango purchased it. We went into an RFP to purchase it from Commerce Shenango. And Spence is currently doing the paperwork for us.
We're waiting for the best I can die. He's supposed to be working on, he said it made it to the top of his pile last week. And Spence, so he's working on it.
So we brought along, I said, oh, I might, I should have four plans if you want to see them. But what we did is, we basically took the three floors and developed a fifty-room hotel on three floors, restaurant on the first floor, meeting space, and then a multitude of room configuration. So we have some long stay units, we have some short stay units, queens, kings, full, full gamut of different rooms. The outside of it, um, then you pass these around. So the idea is to take this building, which has very little curb appeal, and, um, develop something that we feel is more of a destination product. So develop something that not only creates some interest, but it'll generate some foot traffic as well. There should be just two views there, Brian, of the back parking lot.
Yep.
And then the existing photos. You can kind of see how we dressed it up. It's got a little bit of a thirties vibe to it. A little bit of a modern flair as well. So it's got a really cool look. Interior design is that thirties look, forties look, kind of a little bit of art deco. It's kind of neat because when we presented to the hotel companies, the current brand we have, um, said there's nothing else like it in the market. So they're really excited for the product because they think it'll, it'll really work well.
So did, just real quick, do you have a flag already?
We do, Brian, yeah. I want to. So we've actually been approved for two separate flags. One is IHG, you can devote, your premium product. There was about five of those locations at the time. They accepted us into their group. And then just out of good business practice, we reached out to BW Premier, which allows you to develop your own brand. They supply kind of the backend. It's almost like buying a chassis from a manufacturer and then you get to design the body that goes on that. So we've been accepted in the bowl, we're new towards BW. We actually have a franchise agreement with them. Yeah, so what happens is, I think most people are, are familiar with what's called hard brand. So that would be like the Holiday Inn Express, uh, Hampton Inn, you see a flag. What we're finding is when people travel now, they don't really go to hard branded hotels anymore. When people travel, they go on Kayak or hotels.com, they get ratings and they tend to go to a place that's cool, different, has good ratings. So that's what's called a soft brand now. So soft brand is you have your own branding on the building, you have your own design language. You use someone like Dan saying to provide the, the backend for it. So it gets you on the travel agencies, it does all the negotiations for you, you get to use their reservation systems, all sorts of things. So that's the direction we're going into the soft brand. Just, um, it's easier to run, um, it has a much lower cost to operate. So when you go hard brand, they take fifteen to twenty percent of your revenue. Soft brand takes five. So it's, it's a massive number when you're trying to make a hotel work in Norwich. So the economic impact, I tried to just kindly brief down this, um, where we think where this should be. So I have a pro forma, I can show it with you guys, it's really confidential, so if I give it to you, I just want to get it back because I really don't want it going on the city.
So it's happy to share some public, we won't make you share that at this point. If we wanted to see something like that, we would have you back and go into executive session, uh, under contract negotiations.
Okay, that's fine. So what we did is, um, working with the hotel brand, uh, we're also working with a management company. So there's a company that will manage the hotel for us. We contracted them, they take a percentage of it. This is all they do, is run hotels. So they've done pro forma for us. They think we'll be somewhere around fifty-six percent occupancy in the first year. So if you run that with your bed tax number of four percent, that produces almost fifty grand a year the first year in bed tax. After five years, it'll produce almost sixty grand. You can see I have an estimate of six percent occupancy. We hope it'll be better. Looking at the numbers for Corcoran and Oniana, they actually run almost seventy percent occupancy at this level. So I hope it will be better, but we're trying to be a little conservative here. Eric helped us with this, the American Hotel and Lodging Association, which is the entity that basically oversees the hotel industry. They had a, a presentation and they said in their one hundred spent on lodging equates to two hundred and twenty-one spent in the community. So our room revenue the first year is one point two billion. If you look at what that equates to in the community, it's roughly two point six million. Massive number for downtown Norwich. Um, for construction, I have a job member here. We have a construction of roughly nine, nine to twelve months. Hopefully seventy-five people, could be more, but we do a lot of work in this area, like Red Mill. We did the Red Mill property over the hill, it was five million dollars. That brought in a massive amount of jobs. That we hear that it was here, people staying in hotels, people buying food, people going to Lowe's, people going to Curtis, all that sort of thing. Full-time jobs at the hotel, we have roughly eight to ten, until we told the state. And then we also have the restaurant component, which has five to eight. And that actually could be higher, they just applied eight on the restaurant side. Um, if you flip to the back, I just have, um, the hotel stuff again. So the management company we're using, our partner uses currently, they're out of Georgia. It's Copley Williams. Um, so they, we have a contract with them already to basically run and operate the hotel for us. People always ask how we're gonna run a hotel, and we're not. We're gonna hire a management company to do the hotel. Project status, I think most everybody knows, we received New York State funding for this project. So it has a budget of roughly eight million dollars. And we have roughly five point four billion combined from the two grants we received from the state. Dan mentioned it, that we developed the branding and obtained licensing from a brand. We're currently designing the hotel. He said we have four plans. Um, our hope is to basically start construction by mid-late winter this year, be substantially complete by the end of the year. Uh, and then I have our request down here. I kind of detailed what we were hoping to see for a pilot. I'll just preface this by saying, the three projects Dan and I have done, probably the largest personal investment in Shenango County in decades. I think between our three properties, there's probably one point eight billion we invested in Shenango County. Over a million dollars invested in the city of Norwich. All private funding. Never asked for tax pilot on anything. We pay taxes on all our properties and I think, you know, our tax bill is, is well over thirty or forty thousand dollars with all our properties combined. So this is very unusual for us to ask for this. But what happens is, we're basically building an eight million dollar project. And when you run the numbers on the pro forma, at the end of the day, after you pay all the bills, after you pay all your licensing, you have roughly a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars available to pay for your debt service. And when you do the math, we don't exactly know what the number's gonna be, but we're somewhere, probably around a million, million and a half, maybe two million dollars to finance. When you finance two million dollars, that's about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. So you have like a ten thousand dollar spread that you have to come up with. So this tax pilot is very, very important for this project to work. And like I said, we've spent seven or eight years on this so far. So working with the city, we have a final assessed value of two million dollars, correct? We're asking for a twenty-year pilot and what we proposed is kind of what we've seen on our business hotel partners, Hotel Project Downstate. And what they did was kept it static at the current rate. So that building has seen these taxes for ten years, twenty years since it was built, right? They have not changed. So what we're asking for is the taxes to stay roughly what they're at right now, which is, city is thirteen thousand, school is, is five thousand and seven. And then after that, increase five percent till we get to fifteen years. Then from fifteen to twenty years, ten percent till we get to the full value. Um, talking to the city, the full total value taxes at the end of the day would be seventy-seven thousand dollars a year at twenty years. And like I said, I, I went through the numbers and I, like Brian said, we have the pro forma, I can show you guys those. But using the, the values we're getting from the management company, the money from the state, understanding construction is very variable. There's a heavy lift there and it's tight. But we're dedicated to it, we're eight, eight years into it. I mean, we've already purchased this building with Sal. We're moving forward with it, so probably as transparent as we can possibly be, but that's kind of where we're at right now.
Questions? Comments? Discussion?
Yeah, there's obviously a lot more detail there, I just wanted to try and keep it as concise as possible. Be happy to go on any questions?
Yeah, I, I could scroll up and one about the cool idea of how you determine demand, what, uh, who you target. Like, I know you're targeting corporate and how did you come up with kind of a, a feel for just how many business travelers are right now out there? And has it changed maybe over the last five or ten years?
We've really, really struggled with that because what happened was when Banta sold that hotel, it lost its flag. So the flag is what you see, Holiday Inn Express, Hampton Inn, that's called a flag. So because he didn't want to pay the fees, he lost his flag. And when you lose your flag, you lose the data. So the market has what's called a star report, which is an S T R. I don't know the history of it, but that's how you basically evaluate hotels, is you run a star report. So we run star reports along the way. I have a recent, we literally just ran last week. And I can see the demand numbers for the upper mid-scale hotels in Corcoran and in Oniana. So I know what their average daily room rate is, and I know what their percentage occupancy is. But I have no data for. But I have no data for Norwich, which is, and that's the problem with M B T Bank. M B T has been involved with us since the very beginning of this. We meet with them every year, now we meet with them every month. And that's, it's very hard to unwrit the loan because we have no data on Norwich. And it's the result of Banta buying that, that hotel and running it down.
So the other component that comes into that, when we go through a franchise agreement, they don't just look at us and say, here's a flag. We had to pay IHG to bring up six individuals, president of the northeast region, and also other marketing professionals and architects. They came to Norwich about six months ago and unbeknownst to a lot of businesses, they would reach out. They would cold call businesses and they had a rough feel for the amount of room nights that existed because of this issue that we have. So by doing that, IHG gave us what they think their pro forma was. And that was re, reaching out to Golden and M B T and Chobani and G E and everyone that exists around here. So they had a rough idea about what each business would produce and then BW does the same thing. So they reached out and they have a rough idea as well. But like Mike said, when you have a franchise with a lot of these hotels, it is in a sense an open book. So we know what almost every branded hotel does in central Europe. And then we come up with a game plan based off that.
But Norwich, we have no data. And then the other problem is Hamlet.
Which must have a general feel for it or just, I'm sure there's hunches and.
That's where the fifty-six percent's coming.
So what would your, what would your pie chart look like based on business, travel, tourism, people visiting family? Do you, do you create that kind of lobby?
No, the biggest driver is really professional. I mean, the tourism is something there, but tourism doesn't keep hotels afloat unless you're in Orlando. So business travel is what keeps hotels afloat.
Question, have you considered or have you used Air D N A as a resource?
Not that I'm aware of.
Do you make one of think about just exploring, just go Air D N A? I do know for a fact that the professional markets have shifted to Airbnb's to use it as a lodging option for that, that market that you're looking for. And they have a very comprehensive data on demand for the specific market you're going after.
Okay, yeah, we can take a look at that. Yeah, because one of the other things that helps when you get a brand is they have, M B T is one of them, they have what are called R F Ps. But hotels compete for these R F P programs through businesses. So like M B T has a travel program. And in all the big cities, they have lodging agreements. And you want to get in and you want to have an agreement with M B T so that they stay with you exclusively. So that was the other reason for getting a brand, is to get into their R F P system. So we've already had conversations, obviously with M B T and some of the others, about getting those things established.
Anybody else have any questions? I'm just trying to figure out the, kind of like the, the flow chart of how this works. You gentlemen are the owners of the hotel.
Correct.
Now you're going to bring in your managing company, you know, companies that manage hotels, like they did with the Colgate Inn, they bring Marriott in, for example.
Correct.
Never, so you would have that as part of the business model?
Correct.
How about the, how about the restaurant? I see there's a restaurant.
Yeah, so the restaurant, we're gonna basically lease that out. The management company can also operate that for us. We've talked a little about it, but we have, we have an agreement in place with something that already operated. So we'll rent that, that'll just be a revenue generator. Will it open on day one? We don't know. It's been one of those requests, M B T specifically has asked for it. Because we have, we don't have a premium restaurant option in this area. And again, I guess, when it's, it's really sad when you sit at the table and you talk to these businesses. M B T talks about it immensely, how they fly people from around the country. And you don't have a place to take.
Oh, we sent them to Hamilton. I did that for years and, you know, you didn't want to.
Absolutely, right?
We redirected people even though we didn't want them.
Right. We're familiar with the manager of one of the premium products of Ollana. And four months ago, she had ten individuals from G E in Norwich. Regardless of the revenue, we're staying with her in Ollana. And that's the upper mid-scale product in Ollana. She's a family friend of ours. We view this as a basic infrastructure component for this area. This is something that's required when we talk to the CEO and M B T, when we talk to G E and Chobani. These are, this is something that needs to exist for them to bring in the clientele that they work with on a daily basis. So that's our main focus. That's seventy to eighty percent of our business is the business clientele.
And that's why it fits with the U T policies, right? It's a targeted industry for our area environment through when we first started. So it fits within the U T guidelines of the targeted industry for our area. That's why they're in front of us right now, makes sense.
And I think this rescues a little bit the projections, is that the market you're going for is greater than probably what you're projecting.
Correct.
But their investment in community is different. So the Air D N A, I strongly suggest that you get the report.
What do you guys need, I'm sorry, Martha, thank you, because I make, what do you need to run at, Mike and Dan? At what occupancy rate, long-term?
I mean, the, the hope is we run where the other hotels are running. Seven to seventy percent.
Seventy percent? Like, that's the number, right? You gotta be north of sixty, north of sixty-five, right? To really be in a good spot, right?
I mean, it's gonna come down to construction, how well we execute construction. A lot of variables there.
But I mean, so essentially what we're, I'm just trying to get a rough number. When it's up, running, everything's going smoothly, you'd like to see thirty-five, thirty-six rooms, right?
Correct, I agree.
That's what you're talking about, thirty-six premium rooms on average, right? So you go around and men have asked me to and I have before, I used to job for, it was part of my job, it was living, was doing this stuff. And so businesses are reluctant to commit to a number upfront. They won't say, I'll give you twenty room nights a year. They'll tell you, hire how many room nights we spend a year. And of course, with the brand being important to them, because you know, it's right down the street from where they live, we're gonna try to direct people to that brand, right? I'm not gonna lie, I have some objections because some places only say Hampton, they only want flags in those R F Ps, right? Depending upon what kind of company you are. So it's their job to go into places like you and us and to make sure to say, get us on that R F P, right? Because we have the IHG brand. So, and that's something that the Chamber does with us as well. So having a flag in the background is important. Having a premium hotel here is important, trying to figure out how to get those rooms and figure out there's something that, again, bed taxes are up, so I mean, I think we are having some success in trying to get more people here. Tourism isn't the answer though, you're right, it's business professionals and convincing them that that's the place to stay.
And I think the other component of that is too, we looked at going unflagged, unbranded.
Tough play.
And immediately, all the companies said no.
Yeah, tough play.
We won't do that. So we have to have some sort of branding and some sort of flag to even make this work.
In certain companies, they won't stay at a rental fee. Like, I mean, you just, they wouldn't make the, they just, because of their economy hotels.
Because many times these businesses are bringing in customers, so you're not gonna send them to the motel.
Well, you just won't, just even as nice as that might be over there, Mike, you, you, I, we wouldn't send our customers to a rental.
The customers get different kind of treatment.
Well, another, another minor thing is, I'm on the board of the R A O C C, the local car club, do the motor they show. We had a national meet for the Antique Automobile Association of America. And we immediately crossed Norwich off the list. So we had individuals from Florida, Tampa, Arizona, Los Angeles, bring national winners. But we had to hold that event in Hamilton. So we had two hundred and fifty cars, the average value of the vehicle is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then we had two thousand people come that day. And everybody in that club was located in Norwich, but we brought everything up to Hamilton. And we've talked about doing that again, but the clientele that we service, they won't stay at a rental fee. So that's an event we're losing. We've lost, I'm on the soccer board, we've lost national events too, because we have individuals who travel for sports and they refuse to stay in Norwich. So we've had to cancel these events. So we know there's an inherent need.
And it doesn't have to be in, again, I, it's not an either or proposition, it's an and. We, we need a, we need an economy hotel, but the best market is here. Those are new specials, they're two hundred and eighty-nine dollars a night, they were sold out. So I mean, you need, you can have both hotels, if, if the area is vibrant, that's the key, right? So, so they're crying as well, I, I'll tell you, the O'Reilly's have been very instrumental in that series of meetings that we have here monthly. And so is actually doing it at the end of the month. We meet up on the last Thursday of the month to discuss true power of utilization. Because I don't care how successful that hotel is, if we don't clean some of this other stuff up, it won't work. So they, they, they asked us at the Chamber to host these meetings because, no offense, Eric, the city wasn't being aggressive enough and how they tried to address some of it. And they, they've helped us make some progress, haven't you? So we're not just saying, hey, I gotta get my hotel price, I say, how do we, how do we contribute to the entire?
More granular question, you know, more of the details. Your drawings and your renderings show a lot of the atmosphere of the Art Deco building, which looks very nice. It's gonna be dependent on parking, you've got that area back there, you share it with other businesses. How do you, how do, how do you create a kind of a shared space back there? How much do you control of that, I guess?
So we, two thousand seventeen, we started meeting with the city of Norwich. In eighteen, the city kind of gave us some agreements and we could use parking for hotels. What we built into our grant application is about three quarters of a million dollars to purchase one or two properties, take them down and expand the parking.
Buy right in that district, fifty percent of parking needs to be that buy public parking as well. So that's in our current code. I mean, I've, I've been around Chomingo County now for quite a long time. Certainly this project is a little bit of a diversion from the typical I D A book of business. And certainly you kind of alluded to it, Sal. What's the, and I mean, obviously hotels are an important thing here. And I guess, one of the justifications that I need to make in my mind is, is how does this one diverge from, how does it set itself apart from what may be another hotel project five years down the road? I think you alluded to it a little bit, Sal. It's somewhat of a support structure for the other businesses?
Yeah, it's gonna be hard for us, so think about it, U S Silicones coming here. They'd ask us to find and for Airbnb's for their long-term employees who'd be on their route at one twenty East Main Street. As they start to bring people here from Ukraine, as they start to, where am I gonna put them? Because we start to think about this Micron and this Kleen Tech hub that we're talking about, right? Somebody wants to come and look at a two hundred acre site, it's shovel ready, where am I gonna put them? Right, so, so things like that are, it's important. It's just, to me, again, honestly, this is the hub of the county where people are gonna be able to stay and travel to and from, right? The center of the county, right? Where it's just accessible to all the other municipalities. Not having a place where you can confidently say, I can send a young employee on the road by themselves as a, as a veteran to our business economy. So to me, that's why it becomes kind of a, it's, it's a diversion from a normal I D A. And we've checked R C, just so you know, that you're encouraged. And I worked more with Steve Harris and that group, and there are precedents for pilots like this right up the road in Hamilton. Hampton Inn has one, right up the, or no, it's in Hamilton and I think there's one in Kazanovia as well. So we've found them in different places and Steve gave us some examples, through his counterparts of exactly. So it's well within the guidelines of a normal I D A athlete. It's just a little unusual for Chomingo County to be considering it. And the reason why I R C, I think this one's a little bit different than what you've considered in the past twenty years is because it had two substantial state grants, because they saw the need for it as well. Right, so two substantial state grants, same, same kind of presentation was made to them as was just made to you. To say, hey, this is why we think we should get some assistance with this.
To R C's point, you know, when we're looking about what will make this different, have you thought about the, the public or the organization's perception on the fact that this building received a lot of funding from the, our grants program? And then now it will also have a negative income from the tax pay. Just fronting the idea, because the public will ask questions and. And then just chiming on what R C said, is a different, what will make a different few years down the road?
So it's been, we'll have to have a public hearing, so, and I'm like, yes, I'm concerned about the public perception associated with all of that because there's all the tentacles there. It won't be the I D A board, it has to be, I don't mean the D C C board, the original bought the building and now I have to figure out how to deal with that, because there's gonna be some ramifications associated with that sale. So the commerce, yes, this, this, let's just think about this in separate entities. The way in which the building was acquired and then the process in which we had to go through to have the O'Reilly's procure it wasn't handled appropriately. It just wasn't. So it wasn't, there wasn't as much transparency. The way that building should have been done was, they should have acquired it directly from, rather than the D C C acquiring. It doesn't matter, none of those things. So that's what affected perception around a whole bunch of issues. None of that should matter. We need a hotel, we absolutely need a hotel. So dealing with poor perception is not, it's not something that I won't, I'm not used to, right? There's been issues with this since the beginning. The perception that I'm not, I don't want the hotel, so why, because it wasn't handled correctly, so we had to back up and do some steps differently. So I got one group saying, how come he's against the hotel? And I got one group saying, hey, you're presenting an I, the I D A, how come he's so for the hotel? What's, so there's perception everywhere, Martha, and managing that is not something I want to come up with. We need a hotel in this community. I believe this is our best shot to get a premium branded hotel in the foreseeable future. I don't have anybody else knocking on my door saying, let's, let's see, I can help answer the need. This community has a bunch of needs. A hospital is a unique identifier, a newspaper is a unique identifier. A premium hotel is a unique identifier. If I can go travel someplace and stay at a cool spot, I do that, my wife and I do that. So again, we're missing that. And I think we, that's why they're here. So I'm not, I am worried, Martha, I don't mean to sound like I won't, I'll hear a bunch of noise. But I, but I think it's, it's not losing money for the city, it's making money for the city. They're not proposing any lower taxes. They're not proposing that the city or the schools make any less than they are right now. So that also is a little different than a lot of our.
Correct.
U T, a lot of our U T's, there's zero money going out, right? So it was on the tax rules for something small and now it's zero. It's not the case, they're not proposing that. So there's a couple of different things that we should consider, you should consider.
And certainly, a hundred years ago, I had a background in hospitality.
Oh, you did?
Yes. And I certainly know, I at one time inspected every hotel room in Chomingo County. It is a health policy, yes. And so I certainly, I certainly identify with the, with the need. But again, just strictly from an I D A purpose, what sets this apart? And that's, I think, something we need to, you know, the answer's there, the answer's there.
Yeah, you need to, we've been very clear, we do realize this board takes this, this responsibility very seriously. And so do, so does our organization. We wouldn't say to them, come to this if we didn't think, come to the board. We think it's a reasonable, we took the application, obviously we think it's a reasonable presentation. We're going to ask to consider, but we told them you would consider it, not just put a stamp on it and go. So they, they know. This is just the first one.
Just to throw this out there, I think this project kind of is closer to home with us because it's right in our downtown. A lot of the solar projects, like we've seen with the Bainbridge, they receive funding. We're just not seeing it as prominently because we are not seeing the headlines of the D R I like we are with the hotel project. I mean, the Bainbridge project is splitting up their land property because they're receiving stipends from the state. They purposefully separated the four different lots for that reason. I mean, and we're not seeing that in person upfront like we've seen when the guys get.
Certainly, there's, a lot of the solar projects, certainly you're not in it for altruism.
And they don't create as many jobs as, as this is what we're seeing.
Which was. I told you, R C would raise the, you know, like this cube guy.
There's a lot of other work.
I thought you could say around incentive to play.
Mark, what questions?
Just a reference to those, those people that come in from G E, they flew into our airport and went to Ollana.
Right.
So if we can keep them here, that's, that's not.
We're losing, we're losing.
Yeah.
I mean, we're trying, so we want to pay seventeen thousand whatever it is in your taxes. We're gonna pump roughly fifty thousand dollars in bed tax. And then there's all the support that goes with the hotel, putting it in downtown Norwich. And just to answer your point, since two thousand seventeen, our name has been on social media, in the newspaper more than one time, so we are very familiar with getting pushed back. When we stood at the city and asked them to help us with the parking lot, you would have thought we were asking for birth certificates to Jesus or something. All the church ridiculous. But, so yeah, we're very familiar with it, it's, it has not been easy. We're still sitting here.
Yeah, and again, I, I know Mike and Dan and, you know, I've done business with them in capacities as well. And I, it's nothing, it's, it's a needed project, but again, looking at it strictly from an I D A perspective, we just need to be able to answer some of those questions. And I, I think the answers are there.
We just need to be able to answer some of those questions. And I, I think the answers are there. I E, support for existing business infrastructure, that kind of thing. You alluded to that, Sal, but, um, it is, it is certainly a divergence from our typical project.
And we'll have a very, um, well-attended public hearing once we do this. So I think you're right, R C. And I think contemplating and thinking about it in advance is important.
We're, yeah, we're also gonna discuss this.
Of course.
I mean, I'm not gonna cut the personal, right? I'm just saying that. Yeah. So we'll talk, we could talk more about that in the executive session because now we're getting into contract negotiations. There's an ask on the table.
Yep.
Right, so. Anything else for these fine gentlemen?
No.
Anything else for us?
We're good, thank you.
Thank you for your time today. Appreciate it. And, uh, Sal, keep you of rest. You know, our staffs.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you guys.
Have a good day.
You too. Just in the interest of Tom, Brian, you go wherever you want to. If you want to get into an executive session, because we got a bunch.
All right. So, so real quick, let's approve checks and invoices. That shouldn't take long. There's, there's a bill here for Von Shanken King. It shows up on your agenda as a thirty-eight hundred dollar bill. However, we got a invoice from Von Shanken King that had a thirty-eight hundred dollar credit on it. Currently, we don't know anything, but we're just double checking with them. But there's a voucher in here still that says zero. Um, nice egg fifteen hundred in the commerce check has already been paid out. I stopped in, double signed the check the other day. In the interest of financial need. Uh, so need a motion to approve the checks and invoices?
So moved.
Need a second? Got a second, but Jeff and, well, any comments, questions?
I know we've answered before. Everything Baker will reimburse us for the nice egg.
Yes, yep. You'll see that it goes through the accounts receivable and then they'll send the payment in and, yep.
And we got confirmation from them that we can take A C H payments at any time we need to.
Right, thanks.
I forward a heat that email.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Oh, jeez, we didn't vote, normal. I'm gonna sit on my board. Sorry. We'll vote. Martha?
Ryan, aye.
Woodford, aye.
Corey, aye.
Why don't you go?
Burton, aye. Sorry. Um, okay, uh. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session, uh, to talk about contract negotiations.
So move.
Yeah, second, of course, second. Okay. Uh, any discussion?
Do we have to adjourn the meeting or did we do?
No, no, we'll come back in the public session.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
I'm letting you know now that's gonna be difficult with the live stream, just so you know. Cause you can't go back into it after you max out of it.
Oh.
So no further, this will be done?
I mean, it's not recorded.
Do we have to, we have to approve these Bainbridge solar things, right?
And also the, um, easement as well.
All right. Well, let's, let's, before we go into executive session, let's take care of the things that need approval and we'll take action on. Uh, so need a motion, um. Do we have the Bainbridge solar documents?
They were forwarded out to you guys and also I have them, I can project them if you need me to.
So you need to see those?
Print them, Les.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the V S K draft, the documents for Bainbridge Solar.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Ryan, aye.
Woodford, aye.
Corey, aye.
Why don't you go?
Burton, aye.
Uh, do we need to do anything with Tom Addison's lead agency declaration?
Nope.
The easement, we do.
The easement, we do.
Need a, approval, need a motion to approve the easement documents. Those were in our last meeting. In regards to the railroad mitigation, all that good stuff.
Lee Avenue, where we had that spill, there's an easement. So that if there was ever a need for anybody to get in there, address that spill. They have an easement to be able to go in and clean it up or whatever.
That's strictly as needed.
Exactly.
And if made, made out of needed, I'll move that.
I'll second. Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Ryan, aye.
Woodford, aye.
Corey, aye.
Why don't you go?
Okay, and then just one last thing, uh, need an approval of the I D A meeting schedule. Um, you all have a copy of that. Uh, it's still the third Wednesday? Second special cases.
Yes.
Yeah, my apologies.
My apologies.
No problem. When Jeff said your truck was there, we knew something was wrong. I thought maybe the building was on fire.
Corey, aye. Okay, need a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll vote. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Ryan, aye.
Woodford, aye.
Corey, aye.
Why don't you go?
Burton, aye.
Before you close the meeting, Brian, I just want to publicly say to this board and everybody here, this board does a really good job. And the fact that it's literally, I will say this from the best, not the easiest board for us to be able to deal with because of how much attention you all pay to detail. And it's literally something that we could not keep hiding about. Does lead to the thing that Jeff is probably leaving the board. Brian has been president for a long time. I asked Mike Corey if he might consider being a president and then we should consider who might be somebody to be another great addition. Brian wants to stay on the board, but you know, yeah, we also talked about who else might be. We've got no other viable people that, you know, wanna step up. Jeff, you guys think about who might take your spot from that board as supervisor? Did you think it makes some sense? So just think about it, because this is a really high performing board, in my opinion. So it'd be nice to keep it that way. And Brian, for your credit, hopefully we can have you replaced by first quarter, but you've done a great job. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate it. You and Mike Flanagan with the D C C are incredibly responsive. So I appreciate you. Does this make it easy?
It made me look smarter than everyone.
Uh, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you. For our update, I will say Shay and I, Jenna, a bunch of us met with Congressman Molinaro. And I believe that we are going to be able to try to get some federal help potentially to figure out what to do with the Relo. I'm certain he's gonna talk to us about how for the daycare center that she, I don't wanna overstate it, but Amy Howard, woman who is the C E O of the chief. She planted a flag yesterday and said, we will put a daycare center in this facility and we will help to raise the two million dollars to do that. So it's a need in the county. We have people there from New Orleans, New Dennis, they're trying to do satellites. We could do this with a Chase memorial. What you need is the infrastructure to support it. So you don't have to have all those trucks for people on the home payroll. So partner with the chief allows you to disperse that payroll. And Molinaro, Congressman Molinaro was a former county executive. He's only been a collegeman for a little while. So he knows how this stuff works. For whatever reason, he, he was very, I think he was here for the whole election in Schenandoah County. He wants to come back. He got invited, Shay and us, Shay and Jenna and I to go meet with him specifically to help us deal with things like tourism and stuff like that. So I feel good about those things that are on there and I think it's gonna be a good process.
Good. All right. Thank you for the update, Sam. Thank you.
You guys are going into executive session?
Yeah.
You're gonna stay there.
Oh, I missed.
You're both gonna stay. You're not.
Okay, uh, need a motion to go into executive session now to talk about contract negotiations. So I'll vote, Corey, move. Need a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? We'll vote.
Ryan, aye.
Woodford, aye.
Corey, aye.
Why don't you go?
Burton, aye. And we do not expect us to take any action when coming out of executive session.